Okay, we're back in session. We have Sarah representing Shanda at this time in a discussion about conflict attorney process and staff.
Sarah Morris, civil specialist Sarah Legal. I have for you today the updated conflict public defender contract review and potential signature. You'd like them to go through the changes that we have made and then make this your approval. You can sign it today and it's not important.
If you would, let's just highlight what we were here when we talked about the other day.
We changed the contract period from one year to two. It's actually in here as 26 months so that it would end on the end of the fiscal year. So we have a 26 month commitment July 19th and ending September 30th, 2023. We removed the automatic renewal section so there is not an automatic renewal on it. And then we updated this one to reflect the current contract amount of $5,000. And the section on consideration and compensation fees, compensation for murder cases and cases deemed to be of serious nature, it previously said 75, between $75 and $100 hourly. Carrie Honk can speak to that, but we updated it to 100 because it was the judicial recommendation.
Yeah, thanks Sarah. So there is a standing administrative order for the judicial district to pay non-contract public defenders $100 an hour for murder cases or other cases determined to be of serious nature by the judge. So just to have that consistent with what we would pay through that administrative order, it was my recommendation to have that listed as $100 more.
We removed the access to county technologies life-size trial. They don't use that anymore. So we removed that because any type of technology, zoom account, or anything like that will just be on them as part of their contract. And then moving on to the case load guidelines, we changed that to say in addition to any current case load, and then we'll add in what the current case load will do that they'll place on, that they'll be assigned to seven, seven and two child second cases. We added that.
So we look at the case number that they have in the case load on that day or the time they're going to sign it so they know ahead of time of how many active cases they have. So when they sign onto it, they know, and it's memorialized in the contract, we're taking this contract that has these many active clients on right now, and then in addition to that, we're going to sign another 57 cases up to.
Section D, we added within 30 miles of Bannan County for spreading to make an office in the state of Idaho, just for the focus of they'll be representing Indian clients potentially and they need to be available, accessible. In section G, we updated that from a personal contact with client, from a 24-hour time period to maintain contact with their client pursuant to the move of professional conduct. Sometimes that's not feasible, so we just wanted them to be back in the guidelines of what they're supposed to. And then we added a section at the end on N, and this is dealing with the termination of the contract, what we had discussed about representation. So we put in there that counsel should continue to represent clients they have been appointed to represent until the appointing court has granted permission for them to withdraw. In the case of termination, counsel shall continue representation of clients counsel has been appointed to represent under the contract until one of the following conditions has been met. One, the client's case release disposition. Two, new counsel has been appointed to this client. And then if neither of these conditions have been met after 60 days from the effect of termination of the contract, this court may appoint a non-contract hourly public defender to the client and allow counsel to withdraw. Counsel may petition the commission for additional compensation for actual representation of a Biden's client after the effective termination of the contract if additional compensation is not guaranteed and may be limited to, and be limited by county, county district, and the association. So that's the section we added there. Moving on, we added a 60-day written notice of either party to the termination section. So in addition to the mutual agreement that we don't put a time limit on, we added a 60-day written notice of either party. And then just updated the notices between counsel and the commission and updated the names on there.
Okay. Comments?
How many cases does women get?
Just one, yes.
Because he's not at the seven.
I don't know what you get.
He might have this motion against the contract.
I can see that.
There's some other issues we're going to have to cover at some point with Judge Nass and some of the conflicts. The conflict attorneys are calling us and saying, oh, I can't do that case, so we're not doing motions. But they don't want to do the motions, they want us to do it for them. And I don't think that's appropriate for us to be saying that they can get out of a case because they told us they need to. A judicial determination needs to be noted. It's been happening the last few months, it's been aggravating.
Is it the same attorney?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about that, okay.
Okay, now, right now, we're talking about this contract.
Right, right.
Okay, so.
And we do have in that termination, or in the representation section, that they have to be granted permission from the court to withdraw and the court may appoint a non-contract hourly public defender to the client and allow counsel to withdraw.
Is there anything in there about post-sentencing motions?
No.
Because we're now getting phone calls that the attorneys don't want to do motions to have the matter reduced because it's after sentencing, so they need to do it.
Are those questions coming from conflicts who have? These are not conflicts who are outside of the contract. They have an active contract that has. So these are all clients that they have had and represented through disposition, but now post-disposition, they're not one.
They've got a different one now, so they, yeah.
Okay, so it's a different, okay.
Yeah, so there's, I was wondering if there was going to be a requirement that they handle those post-trial, post-sentencing motions as well? And is there a reporting requirement in there now that they, that they complete their paperwork for the grant?
I don't think there's any language about a reporting requirement.
I think there is.
Oh, there is.
They have to comply with PDC reporting to the commission.
Oh, okay. There might be. Because we had talked about that and looked at that. It's in there.
He's worn it out for a couple of years, so. And their reports have to go, if they just get them to me, I'll send them. I've been doing some of theirs if they've just come over and sit with us. And I just want to make sure that happens because I don't want them to interfere with the county's ability to get grants.
Right.
That sounded good to me, I'm from a railroad family.
My dad was a railroad.
I'm a terrible disappointment, I'm the first one in four generations to not be a railroad.
Dave, your career's not over yet.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other discussion about this contract currently? The gentleman here in the red shirt.
Dan Taylor.
Okay, and there, are you the one that's been?
I was contacted by Shandra.
Yeah, he submitted the letter of interest for Soss's defense lawyer.
Okay, well, we want to move forward. Do you have any questions for us?
I would like to see a copy of the contract.
Okay.
It's an odd thing for a lawyer to ask.
So, the process?
Yeah, we can send Dan over a copy of the contract to look and see if there's any concerns and discussions, you know, that we want to have with the commission.
So I've been listening, she's been highlighting different changes. It's all kind of pretty straightforward, I mean.
What I'd like to do is, let's go ahead and send him the contract over, let him review it, and then we'll put it on our agenda for Tuesday to actually sign. If you're in agreement, we'll come back. I'd like Commissioner Tovey to be involved with that process also. I know he's been up and talked with Judge Nass for a couple times, so I'd like him to be able to look at the contract also and then get it on our agenda for Tuesday. Would you make sure that it's on our agenda for Tuesday?
That would be the one.
Yes.
We can actually, I can actually get this to you and review it and sign it, and then they'll just sign it as an agenda item on Tuesday, you want to know that.
So on that, did you see as you skimmed that, that this current copy of the contract has reporting guidelines?
Yes. It has a section, records and reports, compile and maintain complete record records within 2 years. Within 30 days of fiscal year-end, to accounting, the number of certain dress representatives, crimes involved, expenditures by category, investors evaluation extraordinary, travel totaled by time, and linking a written and/or digital copy of all criminal files taken at their time. How valid is the number of 2021 files?
That's not what you were, no.
Is that not what you're talking about?
It's not quite what I'm asking about, but I'll get you that information, it's super easy to have. And I'll send a copy of what we used to Dan as well, and to everybody, because everyone else is seeing that.
Is that something in addition to the, it is, to the audit?
Right.
That's what I'm talking about, there's a 50.
It's a little bit different. So we've had issue, I don't know if you remember that we chatted about, that there were people, there were some attorneys that didn't want to report, and it was a tooth-bullying contest to get it done. So I would recommend that we let Dave come up with that verbiage that he needs for those grants to be put into this contract.
It's yours all, I'll just talk to you, Brian, it's your contract.
Okay, so we'll get on that right now. The other part of the conversation that we had here was the staffing and how we do, how we do this process.
There was a discussion that was had, and so we put this on the agenda today for discussion of how to move forward with the conflict public defender. It was basically the way to do that, and how we, whether we talk that or how that works. So that's why all these people were invited.
So, and last time we talked a little bit, we talked about kind of a committee, and I kind of like the idea of Carrie, a commissioner, and maybe one of the judges or something being on the committee that looks over the applications. You two would have the expertise, and then the commission would just be involved. Is there more of a process that you think?
What would you think about? I mean, certainly from the administrative standpoint, I could weigh in, but not being a practicing attorney nor ever being a public defender, I think there would be some value in having some representation from the defense bar, certainly someone who does have an interest in the outcome of the situation.
We kind of talked about that, rather than a judge, or maybe having Carrie from the administrative standpoint, or someone from Dave's office or David's, and then a private counsel that has experience as a criminal defense attorney. I think a judge would be okay, but I think we have to be concerned about letting the community do it.
Yes, yes.
I think the expertise from the public defender's office and some of the attorneys there, and private counsel, it would be helpful to have that kind of discussion with the only applications for clear for the one perfect defendant's defense. That's my thought.
Some of the chiefs, we had a conversation about this today during lunch, some of the chiefs, and we all advocate for having the ADJ on that committee. Because the administrative district judge is the person who this is going to be in front of all the time, and we want, we want to, a lot of the courts don't want to be in a position where they have a yes or no vote, because that puts them in an awkward position. Their input is invaluable in those situations. So I know in other counties, they've done like a commissioner, the administrative district judge, the chief public defender, or his deputy, or her deputy, and usually inexperienced local attorney.
And honestly, the final decision would be the commissioner.
It's always yours, yes.
So this would be an advisory group that would come back and.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I think it gives you some insight, gives you some confidence, the information you receive, you can look at it and get better things.
I agree with you 100%.
This is, in some other districts, it's been expanded too, so that the county that has this committee set up has volunteered to go do some, do interviews for smaller counties that are hiring, either by contract as the public defender, well, not as conflict though, because there's not enough of those to go around as it is, and usually don't have as much.
And then you and Commissioner Tovey had had a conversation about some people out of Dave's office being conflict.
I don't know that it was out of Dave's office, I know that it was a discussion that can create a conflict council, public defender in-house council. If Dave can speak to that, because I think he knows.
It is done in some places where you have a separate office of conflict council, they have, they have given an office space where they work together in the same building, but they're independent contractors in that office. So they have a shared building, they're on salary, so now instead of seven a month or whatever it is you're using, bearing in mind that there's going to be some places where they don't, can't take more because there's two conflicts to go around in a particular case, but they wrap them up to 200.
And how would support staff be provided?
We usually go to an individual attorney, but I think we should do a trip to Lottville County, anyone who's interested, particularly Commissioner Tovey and Terry and the judge, and see how they're doing it there, because they do have a conflict office.
Interesting question to ask, did they, they hired independently, not, they didn't take from the existing public defender office, did they?
No, no. No, because all those people would have had conflicts built in from their time in the public defender's office.
I think they hired.
Okay, a field trip probably would be a good idea, but I think we'll set up the committee.
Yeah, it's something that we explore, I think. It's something that has been brought up before, I've not ever seen it, so it would be interesting to see how it works, and I think it's sort of effective, efficient.
And if the commission authorizes, I'd like to reach out to some of the bigger areas and see how they've set them up from the outset, because then like Tucson has, has a public defender's office that has 150 lawyers in it, but then they have two conflict offices that are set up. I'd like to investigate how they did that, just so we have more information on how these things grow and how they started originally.
Okay, and then that's one of the other questions that has come up, is Bannan County has quite a few conflict attorneys, more than some of the other counties are same size. Is there a reason?
No, I couldn't tell you why. I have their numbers from the past six months. There's only one time where Tony, in March, Tony had seven, and that was until June, that was the only time that somebody hit seven or nine, and that's because Bob and Riker and Laggis were the only ones really taking cases at that point. And then we discussed at the last meeting that part of the, Judge Nass has made it possible for us to actually use our case management program now as it was originally designed. We discussed previously that every misdemeanor was not attached to its attendant felony. So there were cases where we had, we had the conflict felony and a misdemeanor, even though it was essentially the same case, because they were in front of different prosecutors and in front of different judges. Now, every felony case that has attendant misdemeanors will all be in one file. And just so you know, I don't know if sometimes they miscount or they misunderstand, but the number of counts in the file don't matter. So I think sometimes conflict counsel get concerned that there are so many counts. That doesn't matter, a case is a case, whether it has one count or 14. So, but the numbers, as we track them, because we're the ones that are making the phone calls, nobody is getting that many. I can, like Bob Eldrich, March 2, April 6, May 5, June 9 because of the, and so far he's had four this month. Craig Parrish, five in March, six in April, one in May, three in June.
And that wasn't really the question that I was asking.
Yeah.
It was the number of attorneys that we have under contract.
Yeah.
For conflict is larger than some of the surrounding counties.
And that I can't tell you, because there are some counties, like I know Nez Pierce has four attorneys, and rather than have an institutional office, they have four independent attorneys, which means that anything that's extraordinary requires two counsel, they're paying extra for that out of pocket. But that works for them. I don't know why we have so many under contract, because I have the list of everyone we use, but there's really only four.
Because I don't really have an answer for that, I don't know why you have nothing to add.
Well, that's the question that we're asking, and we want to know, do we need them? I mean, do we need to fill this position?
The interesting question is, they're not even, it doesn't appear to me that they're giving you numbers that they're contracted for.
Well, Riker and Laggis are going to, and here's the other problem, is I can never tell you how many conflicts are going to be in a given month.
Sure.
So we've always planned for the worst-case scenario, and like Mary Shay just does juvenile, so that solves a lot of problems there, because we had a lot of issues with the judges, because they weren't able to be in multiple places at one time. So we have one that does juvenile, one that does misdemeanor, and then we have the, basically four conflict attorneys. I don't think we're overstaffed at that point, and you know, as far as our criminal numbers go for even like-sized county, we're high, and always have been. So unfortunately, we all love this place, and know what a great place it is to live, but it's been a drug corridor for a long time, so our case numbers are high.
Will the numbers adjust a little bit as the misdemeanor stays?
They will, because we won't be, I mean, at some point, you're going to have a lot less misdemeanors that need to get conflicted, because the misdemeanors that have an attendant felony are all going to be in front of this one person, and it's still going to be one file. It's going to help.
It'll be interesting to see how it progresses, but that, like I said, that's just a discussion we'd had and conversation.
And I will track that separately, so that I can, I can give you quarterly updates on how we're doing and what numbers we're using, so that you can make sure that we're utilizing everyone we have.
I was just going to say, the numbers that I've seen show that we've conflict out about 19% of our cases. Take that number with a grain of salt.
Yeah.
I'm looking at your 2019 report, you conflicted out 659 cases. So if we've got five conflict attorneys, that would be 131 or 11 per month, per attorney.
It'd be interesting to see how many are felonies and misdemeanors.
Yeah, and you got to remember every time. The felonies are 269, and the misdemeanors, 390.
Okay, and the other thing that factors into that is if that person that gets a new charge has a probation violation, that file is real and then attached.
And on the report, of that 390, there were four probation violations listed on the report.
Yeah, that's not, there's, there were a lot of probation violations. There are always a lot of probation violations. But I don't, I can't go through their numbers to report them, although I am trying to figure it out, so that the legal server system that we bought, when we've got it 100% where we want it, I'm getting the conflict attorneys added to it for free, so that when we start doing case counts, and I can help them with that, and everything will be apples to apples instead of relying on someone else's record keeping.
Like I said, we're just asking a lot of questions.
No, that's, and I, that's a good thing.
Because I may not have an answer for that, Dave, because look at it, either one of the two.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much.
So we're going to continue to look at committee and committee.
We'll put a committee together.
All right, and then Dave, you want to work on looking at, maybe taking a trip to Lottville County and.
Yeah, if that's all right with the commissioner.
That'd be good, and I'm sure Commissioner Tovey will.
I know, I just, I don't want to overstep, so if you don't want me involved in it, if you'd rather the judge and Carrie do that.
No, I think that that's part of the committee, that, I wouldn't get everybody having the same answer.
Excellent, so we'll have Dave work on that, have it minced together. What else do you want to work on before we come back from this?
Honestly, we're going to go through with this contract if everybody's in agreement, and then we'll just find out the answers to the number of cases we have and how things, like you say, as they flow back together.
Yeah, as they flow back together, it's going to help.
And that, those numbers I gave you, the 659 and 2945, that was a 22% conflict rate. So we're conflicting out fifth of everything we do.
Yeah.
And again, I don't, I don't know.
And I'll go through those numbers and I'll send you what I have and how that sometimes occurs.
I have no idea whether that's a high number or a low.
And I don't either.
I have no idea.
I wish I could answer that question, but I think that's what you're asking really, is is this a high number for a county of this size or average, or well?
Yeah, no idea.
Our problem has always been, when it comes to these issues, is multiple arrest drug cases, where you have four people arrested at the same time in a drug house. That's always been our issue. So, and we have had cases with up to seven people on them, so those are problematic.
As the commissioner looks, or commission looks at options, you pull one lever, the other lever goes off. So if we wanted to go thin on contracts, we do encounter those cases with multiple defendants, and Dave's office gets one, we would go to the conflicts, the contract conflicts, and then after we go to the contract conflicts, we go to the non-contract hourly conflicts. And so there's always that balance, and it's the, wherever we want to assume the risk. If we do get those cases, and we, maybe we're over, I'm not saying that we are, but let's say if we're overstaffed on our contracts, we'd have to pick those hourly attorneys, and one or two cases from those hourly attorneys might represent a whole month of contract counseling. But I think that's just eyes wide open, the commission looks at that and decides where do we want to build it out. While we're talking, I ran the numbers, Dave gave the numbers of monthly referrals to the attorneys in terms of active cases right now that our attorneys are running. I don't have Laggis and Rikers, because right now I don't have a good way of sorting out private clients versus intended clients. But for Tony, I'm showing 27 active pending cases for Tony. For Bob, I've got 36 active pending cases, and then for Craig, he has 49 active pending. So these are all district court criminal cases with hearings.
Yeah, so, and Craig has, you know, that 39, and he's only had 15 new ones in the last six months. So he's, yeah, the averages, I can, I think we should take this, Commissioner, so that you can look through it as a comparison, as you have.
Actually, we'll need to make a copy of that for the records.
But there are people on that list now that are no longer, are no longer doing the work, so.
For the record.
All right, no, thank you, thank you very much. I think we're headed in a positive direction with it. All right, thank you.
Be in contact. Do you need this one back? One other thing is that I want you to just keep in mind as we're going, is that if we decide. that if we decide at some point over the next year or two, um, to create that additional office, we need to talk long and hard about what we're gonna ask the state to cover in that conflict office, because money will be available on the workload.
Sounds smart to me.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Mike and Hal.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mike Chagrowski, Bannet County Engineer. I have with me Hal Jensen, Bannet County Funding and Development Director. We do have Hannah and Jenna here, they are part of the, the committee.
If they wanna pull chairs up, that's fine. You can sit there.
Last meeting that we had regarding this was on the seventeenth, I believe, yeah, seventeenth of June, and from that meeting, we learned that we needed some more information delivered, and I think specifically a scope, purpose, overall desire, outcome of the use of funds, including the administration reporting matching fund requirements of the grant, in a memorandum form. We sent an email to, uh, Jenna Goman, you know, and Hannah Sanger, I didn't know Jenna's name until I read it on the email here, but it's Ms. Goman. Um, and, uh, with, with, uh, information that, that we learned from this last meeting, specifically regarding the memorandum, uh, shortly thereafter, we had that sent, I supplied it in your, your packet, and then also probably about an eighty percent application form that had been filled out. Uh, in our meeting, our original meetings in, in May, uh, of this year, we talked as, as a group, as communities, um, about this application, or excuse me, about a grant that we would use for, uh, facilitating, um, uh, water quality issues within, within Bannet County. Um, at that meeting, there was ourself, Bannet County, Southeast Idaho Public Health, IDQ, City of Chevick, City of Pocatello, um, and we talked openly about how does this work and different things. I believe back in May, you gave us authorization to, to attend that meeting. Um, and from that, we brought to you, uh, an idea and, uh, and some information regarding a grant. Uh, our, this meeting is all about that, uh, we still have the same, uh, desire to continue with this grant and to, uh, provide, um, to have the, the county commissioners be, be sponsor of that grant, and to, uh, learn more about, uh, water quality within, uh, within Bannet County and, and what makes sense of being able to, um, produce, uh, different types of guidelines or, uh, and that we can use to make water quality, or use water quality within our decision-making process.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Hal?
Any questions or comments about what's been presented to you with this one grant application?
I'm just curious as to what impacts you think this may have on some of our rules and regulations going forward, whatever this comes up with, looking into your crystal ball, any of our zoning ordinances or anything like that.
Uh, right now, the rules and regulations are, we have four different governmental ended agencies that don't necessarily have any cross-referencing relative to how the inter, interface interact. Uh, under the Source Water Protection Grant Application Summary, second paragraph underneath rationale, although state code does not require local jurisdictions to consider water quality in their subdivision ordinances, goals of protecting groundwater quality are included in the City of Pocatello, City of Chevick, and Bannet County Comprehensive Plans. This provides justification for each entity to address water quality in their development codes, similar to wildlife and open space subdivision code requirements. So, in relation to that question and other items, uh, this is basically, in my opinion, the opportunity for the agencies, as well as the municipalities in Bannet County, to have conversation about what makes sense relative to water quality, how do we ensure work to control, et cetera. And we don't really have anything in place, and that's part of what started this discussion. Therefore, the grant application, therefore, because we are the larger entity of the three who have a greater, um, implication relative to septic tanks and drain fields, um, we've chosen to be the, uh, the grant applicant.
And this is an advisory group, not, I mean, they don't have any authority.
That is correct.
Okay. Christie, have you had an opportunity to look this over and, and the administrative part of it, that, or?
Yeah, we've, we've had a dispute there on it, um, and like I talked about in the future, it's a little bit earlier than, um, Michelle, we think it's gonna be two, if something can, yeah. The only, the only, uh, question is gonna be, it's gonna involve, so make sure that our staff documents that in no time. If it's not documented, then no time, it can happen, and it might be used as much. And then help us work out what, like, if it is a failure, it's a challenge.
And, and city of income, yeah, is, is included in this as well?
Cause one needs to actually, it's gonna have to be certified by a supervisor, um, or document which you want to have. So, just work on that.
So, I take it that coming from you all, that this is the direction you'd like to move forward?
Um, Commissioner, I, I, I look at it as that, you know, everyone's concerned with, with water quality, everyone's concerned with water quantity, and it makes sense that we have this group and we, uh, have an opportunity to speak openly, is, is how I talked about, and come up with some recommendations and thoughts to present to the, uh, the commissioners to consider either as policy, guidelines, rules, however we wanna, however we wanna work those, uh, on that. And I think the overriding goal is that, um, we would, we would desire to, to at least have opportunities of being able to use water quality in some of the decision-making processes. I don't know if it's, you know, I, I don't know if it belongs in an ordinance or how that, how that works, but we, but using that as, as, as some guidelines and that starts to make a lot of sense for the future.
Any questions? Chance to speak?
Unless it's asking you to.
I don't allow it very often from that area, so.
But, uh, please be working on this as a county and as a community.
Let's, let's go ahead and make a motion. Okay. Mr. Chair, in regards to the grant application, I made the motion that we approve signing and submitting it and participating in the project.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 We have our some items relative to the paperwork that we need to clean up, we will work to get that two weeks before signature on Tuesday. Is that fair? Is that good?
Yep, yep. As long as all the lines are filled in, I'll sign it. If they're not, we'll come back. All right, Scott?
Yes, you want, you want to be first to come up?
I'll let you go.
Hello, sir, I'm, how are you? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission, Scott Crowther, Event, Business Manager and Event Director. So, I have a few things to, to chat with you guys about today. While Mike is here, I'd actually like to, to kinda skip to one of the last things we have on there, which is the discussion about the plumbing issues up at the Event Center slash Wellness Complex. Um, as you guys are aware, we have, when the Event Center was designed, or I should say, when the Wellness Complex was designed, um, it was designed to lift, uh, sewage up to Olympus, uh, which is pushing it uphill. It's not a great design, as a matter of fact, it causes us some significant cost issues and potentially some fairly embarrassing moments that could occur.
Twenty thousand a year.
Just, yeah, just a little bit of money each year, and then also, I, I worry a little bit about opportunity costs, you know, if we have, uh, a large-scale event where we had something, uh, go wrong with our plumbing, that could be pretty devastating to us, uh, in the long term. Um, and so, Mike has, has prepared a couple of, uh, presentations, or a couple of options, I guess, or just an option for, um, possibly accessing and maybe using some ARPA funds to help us to remedy this issue. Uh, since the, the complex was built, they have now run a sewage, uh, line down off of the Fairgrounds Road, um, so we could actually tie into that, um, and allow our sewage to move downhill like it should. It would eliminate the need for the pumps, the booster pumps, and some of the, uh, and that would eliminate some of the issues that can be caused by disgruntled folks if they chose to be destructive, so. And I will turn that over to Mike, I know he's put some numbers together, uh, for the options, so.
So, Commissioners, I think in your packet, I, I've provided some different cost estimates, some different routing options, but the override, overwhelming goal was to use gravity as a motive to move the water instead of pumping electricity, what has a motive to move the water. Probably one of the, um, cost-saving issues when the Wellness Center was put together is they don't have backup emergency generation of the power, so if upon, or if the power does go out, uh, sewage, sewage still flows downhill, and downhill is a, is three different locations in, in, at the Wellness Center. And so, the goal was, is to, uh, connect all the downhill points and bring it to Thurgood Road. Now, when the sewage line went in, or the sewer line went in down Thurgood Road, and just for your knowledge, it flowed from north to south with, which, you know, makes sense, when it combines with the City of Pocatello system, just right there on Fairgrounds Road. Um, and so, we have two different connection points at that location, one on the, on the north side, adjacent to, uh, the egress access to the, to, excuse me, to the amphitheater, and then one on the south side, that goes to family apartment, and, uh, and will type up the school there. I've provided some schematics for you to take a look at if you wanted to, to see how that, how that flows. Um, the south side, it's a little easier to get everything to flow downhill than what the north side would do, to work for kind of skate around, uh, smaller areas. We do have a section that would be boring, you know, there would be no open touch, or it would be, would be boring if we didn't have it, they, right, some, some Fairgrounds Road, you can go over a hump and set a tent floor there, we would just, we could blow right through it, and that, that is expensive, but, and again, that's, it's a lot less expensive for the long term, uh, to, to have a gravity solution, because one gravity never shuts off, it just keeps going, and a lot of it flows downhill. Um, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them here. Um, I, I feel like I've submitted several of these to the Commissioners. I don't wanna necessarily apologize, but what I wanted to do is each, each success of one that I submitted, the last one was just yesterday, uh, was the most updated, and what, what we engineers like to do is we like to throw something down on paper, get a cost, and then go out on site, have a plan in hand, if we will walk through and make notes of all the different things that we need to change, has it looked different from the ad built from what's actually on the ground, do we actually have to? So, I was able to complete that yesterday morning, and that's why you got the, the last piece, but the one that was submitted yesterday on July fifteenth, uh, was probably, you know, is, is the one that I would live with, if you will, um, I think that's gonna be closest to our, uh, to our project cost and, and, um, really look at it from a funding, you know, funding budget, where from a funding budget, we put everything in that budget that you're buying.
And that's, that is not one point two million?
Um, yes, it's like one point two million, and that, that's on the north side, on the south side, that's two hundred and fifty thousand, and so, my recommendation.
Four point five?
Yeah, my recommendation is that one point five million dollars for, we get upper funds.
Now, obviously, on something like this, it would be, it's gonna require skills of contract labor, um, this isn't something that we could really even delve into, uh, to try to help reduce some of those costs.
I don't know, it's been having, having it bid out, and I'm done.
You mean, can you just get Dan to do that?
Put it on the schedule.
I can, I can just tell you what, uh, what the plumber Seth talks us about when he has to get in there and unclog those things, it sounds like a horrible job, and I like Dan's blown up, but I don't want him to wade through twenty feet of stuff.
So, we would, I, I would suggest this looks a lot like the, like the RV park that we recently finished there just a little while ago, and that, um, it would be a design that built, uh, project, or we would, we would have this design, we have our design meetings, and then we get it approved through the IDQ, uh, being the sewer system, and we approve the IDQ, have that approved, and we would bid the project, and following the, um, co-fitting laws, you know, go into the contract, sign those, and then pick the contractor, or get the contractor in a place and kinda just stay out of the way, and, and have inspections there, inspections logs.
Like the City of Pocatello, Commissioner, I have a heart that I shouldn't, if it's going down instead of out, but.
You know, I've, I've contacted the City of Pocatello, part of this, you did, or just part of it there, I've contacted them, and, um, I think an interesting point is that when the cost to connect two of the sewers, that originally occurred in, like, two thousand and fifteen, would be transferred to these connections too, because essentially, we're not contributing any more wastewater than what was initially projected, and that's what was caused, uh, which is basically transferring from the Winter Street down to Fairgrounds.
I'll just tell you that if, if we can use ARPA funds, I think that this is a project that needs to happen. We, we, every year, we've had the backups, we've had to replace the pumps, we've had, the other day, it was one day within canceling a concert because we backed up. It's, it's not a good situation.
I was just thinking, is this a system you put like a muffin muncher, like we got out of jail?
So, you wouldn't actually need one in this type of system, it would actually just flow down the pipes, the, the, um, and we wouldn't have any problems. Right now, what's happening is, is people have placed, like, cloth in the, in the pipe that flows down, hits our pump, and then clogs our pump up, and currently, uh, we have some of our restrooms closed because our pump has been tampered with. So, at some point, I may have to go in and, and we may have to throw another, uh, five to ten thousand dollars to fix that problem, if, if this isn't the solution we choose to go with. But if we were to do a muffin muncher, it would actually be in front of a pump, which would just be an additional cost, you know, and, and it doesn't, and I, I worked with a lot of muffin munchers at the, at the prison, usually we had to put them on the back end of the, of the thing, 'cause we didn't want that material getting, getting down into the, uh, the sewer system, um, and those things are another monster, there's just, if they did break down, they, they are very maintenance-heavy, so, again, this allows us to just avoid all that stuff. Um, and I, and again, I, I feel like we have such a wonderful complex up there that, that we shouldn't, uh, be hindered by, you know, some of the, the poor, uh, sewage plant.
So, I guess the, the major decision is, are we giving it back to Health Trust or we're keeping it? That's the major decision in my mind.
I still need to pay for it? Do it rent this thing?
Well, I'd say I, I think that we move forward on it, we can ask for, for help with it and, and staff some pay. I think with ARPA funds, this is the project that meets the criteria in.
I believe you were gonna try to have a meeting here after budget, so maybe around about two weeks, um, put this on the list of ARPA funds that's been, that I was to, that we're gonna start this, for our funds, and that can be.
I got hit up yesterday about the line going over to public spender. On the burner, the back burner still.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to get to that, so.
Maybe the first one, we should prepare with that. We didn't have a little bit after budget, we could bring it up, but we didn't have that, and I didn't sit in front of, and then we started, I was like, we, the market's being up there.
Okay, works for me.
Okay. Perfect.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Just a little chunk of money. All right. Hey, we're just trying to do it right. That's awesome. We're just trying to do it right. All right, so we have a couple other things to talk about. Let's see, I know for a fact that Melanie's here, so if we could, Melanie, you want to come up there? And Annie, if you want to come up too?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. That's good to know, thank you. Okay. So, let me put this.
Okay, yeah, my name's Melanie Francis, a little Pocatello.
Does she have anything else? So, Melanie approached us about doing a fundraiser in the amphitheater for a local youth, a member of our community that was injured in a toilet accident.
Diving.
Oh, diving, yes.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we have, and so, we've kind of talked about a couple of different options, where this event could take place. It looks like the amphitheater is where they would like to conduct this or hold this, this event. We've kind of gone over some of the ground rules for this event, like responsibilities that we would provide, which would be essentially a clean facility when you come, and we would expect a clean facility when we leave. So, they would be responsible for stuff like trash removal, they'd be responsible for any food vending that happens, and then also the back end of the production. And they would meet any of our requirements with vendors and/or sponsors. The fee for this is, there's a ten, I'm sorry, a one thousand dollar reservation fee and then a twenty-five hundred dollar rental fee. And so, those fees, Ms. Francis would like waived. And so, I'll turn the time over here to explain what's going on and to discuss the fee in general and what you want to do.
Yes, like I said, it was a good friend of ours, he's from the winner's accident and is now a part of the project, and he has a spinal cord injury from diving with his soul. And so, we just wanted to rally around the family and help raise money for them with their pay costs and changing their house and all their rehab and hospital stays and everything that he's going through at the last. So, we would like to do, his name is Porter Brinkley, so we were finding Porter's playlist, friends at concert, and I contacted Peter Brinkley and John Schmidt, two musicians in Utah that are former friends of theirs, that have offered to come for no charge. And so, there's talent and sort of stuff that have them to put on a concert for the T and Bs. And I know they are already loved in this, I don't know, Peter Brinkley actually has been here a few times, and John Schmidt is with the fan guys, so he's been here a few times, so they definitely get it, they respond here. And so, and then maybe a couple of local bands or two, just kind of draw some more T and B people there. And also, food stuff, go get it to the family. We also have had the MCM, the equipment company, has offered to donate their equipment, so I don't think that would be any cost really.
The electrician? The electrician will do any cost?
To turn everything on.
You'd still have the staff cost. We would.
I'm still going to have to haul the garbage out. You're not going to haul all the garbage to the dumps.
Yeah, right. We'll get it where it needs to go.
No, we, there's still, there's still costs.
There's still costs to the county that we have to incur. And I like the deal and I appreciate the deal, but we just did this about a month ago, if I'm not mistaken, when the LDS church, when the missionaries had their-
The octo, the octo.
Yeah, wasn't that the same deal? Wasn't that the same kid?
Similar, yeah. It ended up costing, yeah, a lot, it made a lot.
So, I just have a tough time, people playing the, I mean.
Do you have a cost, what it would cost us to haul the garbage and do the staff for that period?
So, I think that that is wrapped up in that twenty-five hundred dollar rental fee, right? There's obviously the power that we'd have to pay for the facility. What we've had people do is we have them collect and place the garbage, and then we usually come in and pick it up, and it takes us about an hour, so probably two hours to go through, collect the garbage, clean the bathrooms, and get it back to where it'll be stationed. We do have to have somebody there, one of our staff members there throughout the event in case something happens, and then also, they've got to stay and essentially shut up the, close up the facility after the fact, put chairs away, that kind of stuff is usually the staff costs on the set of the event. So, if I was going to estimate total person hours, we're probably looking twelve to fourteen hours. And then you do have the electrical cost.
And then, but the general cost on a facility for this deal would be four thousand dollars?
Thirty-five hundred, but-
What's the five hundred for?
So, it's twenty-five hundred for the facility, and then there's another thousand that gets returned, so it's actually just point five hundred. And then, on the contract-
User fees? On one contract, I noticed it was four thousand dollars. On this one, we don't have any, anything at all.
Yeah, the thing with it would be, the user fee would just be, I think, the electrical inspection, how the electrical, so, and that's not on there.
If you're planning on five hundred people above, it's usually five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The general cost, we're being asked to forfeit. So, I'd be willing to go half that, but I'm not willing to do it.
So, if you give us kind of a number of what you thought it would cost for the people?
Yeah, like I said, it's, the electrical is going to be the tough one, because the way our system works, we have to have a certified electrician. And usually, it's either our certified electrician or an electrician with contract to the facility so we know. So, that cost, they have to be there to turn on the power and shut off the power. That's probably the greatest cost right there. And then, depending on, depending on the event, our hours just change. I mean, like, that's the truth, is our hours just change. It'd be hard to say exactly what that cost would look like. Again, depending on the number of people that showed up for the event, there's just factors there, so.
I'd be willing, if they would cover the electrician, to be, okay, we're the worst of it. Because there are people that work anyway, so. But I'll defer to you there. That's what I would do, if they would cover the electrician.
I'm still pretty solid. I mean, if we hadn't have just done it, I mean, there can't be a monthly fee to me. It's just, that's where I'm at. If you want to wait, we can talk about this on Tuesday when Commissioner Toby's here. And-
What do you think that electrician cost is? If we, if we're going to have to hire it out?
So, I would say, if we had to hire it out, probably between two hundred and fifty and four hundred dollars. That's what I think that cost is.
And I agree, that's one person. Everybody else that's put the garbage out, that does, I mean, it is their normal job. This is how we pay for their normal jobs.
Yeah.
And like I say, if this is the first time, I'm more willing, but every other month, I just, I'm not willing. So, if you're more comfortable, we can talk about it with Commissioner Toby, because on Tuesday's agenda.
Otherwise, we'd be a split vote today.
It's going to be a split vote, it won't happen today.
So, we'll have to wait for Commissioner Toby.
So, I'll listen to that one, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next contract to discuss, hey, good, thank you, is Sweetheart Productions, and I think Jerry, you can come on up if you don't mind.
He's not on my agenda.
Sorry.
Come over. Come around. I got a guy on each side.
I'm Roger Hernandez, for nine sixty-one Constitution, each other.
So, for the Miss Idaho Royal pageant, they usually come and they spend about four hours in one of our rooms just interviewing contestants. And it's something that they've done for many years. It's never even really been on a contract. It's just something that we've provided to them for several years. We've either used the office under the grandstand or one of the rooms in the amphitheater, we just don't put them up on the money, we're doing for the event. We really don't have a fee for something like this. And because we don't have a fee, and they'd also would like to not pay at the, I don't know if that's the point right here. So, if you'd like to talk just a little bit about it and history and what you guys do.
I mean, my wife's been doing this for about now almost nineteen, nineteen minutes after she was, before I came along. It's usually a baby pageant, everything from babies to eighteen-year-olds. It's not one of those, it's ones where you see, like, a set show. Well, they doll up the kids, they make them look like hookers, for lack of better words.
Sorry, I can't speak fluent. But, yeah, I have a way of words.
But it's, you know, but it's, when I first came on board, did the whole thing, I thought it was kind of, eh, you know, it was just, I'm not, but as I saw the progression of these kids, actually, it doesn't, or it isn't, but it's all basically, it's all nonprofit. And any money they do make, when you do make it, you usually just help out the judges that volunteer their time and any other, any other, incidentally, in that case. You usually pay out profit most of the time, but.
So, yeah, so you're just, they come in and do like an interview in the green room or something to that effect?
Yes, usually the way it works is we, when we borrow a room, like, I mean, stands, we'll set up so that they come in, it's a very secure location, I'm there as well. And usually, the contestant will come in, go do the interview with three other judges, and that's just one portion of it. The other portion is held, but done at the county fairgrounds in county. And that's, you're modeling and your talent and all that, which is what it looks like. So, it's two phases here, and it depends on the contestant.
I have no problem. Any of you can move it outside, right?
No, on this one, no, I'm just kidding.
Go ahead.
I'm good with this one as well as, yeah, no, that's great.
And then, I just, what we'll do is if it's okay with waiving fees, we'll just find a room that fits with our schedule and then we'll look and know which room works best. Because if we have a venue in all those areas, we can hire places in there.
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we approve the request from Sweetheart Productions as presented.
I have a motion, I would favor say aye. Aye. Pass this, give me a minute, please.
All right. Juan, come on up.
This is the vicious of calling.
My name is Juan, Juan Mariano, I'm president and promoter of Mountain Forest MMA. We are a MMA, pretty much combat force organization, if you don't mind, after the commissioners. But this gives you a little rundown of who we are and what we're all about, and we're looking-
I'll introduce you.
Look quick.
So, Juan and his company have asked you the amphitheater on August twenty-first from seven to ten to hold an MMA, a handful of MMA fights, an MMA event, with an estimate of a thousand people. They are willing to pay full fee, the full fee schedule. Because they are going to be serving alcohol, or would like to be serving alcohol, it now brings the sheriff's office kind of into the mix. I talked to Captain Hamilton on the sheriff's office about the numbers of people that he would estimate for this event. He's thinking somewhere around eight people, that's the cost that would be transferred to you, obviously, for this event. But because it impacts two different entities, the fairgrounds and the sheriff's office, that brings it into your organization's world, really. And so, we just wanted to explain this, the event, the precautions that Juan has got in place, some of the things that he's going to be doing, and then from our side, the logistics that we would need to cover that event as well. But this is, they're not asking, he's not asking for a fee waiver, he's just merely presenting this event because it kind of works in those two different zones that way here.
I just got a quick question for you, Juan. How are you expecting to set this up for it to work? In my head, I can't picture how you'd put the MMA ring in with the way the amphitheater's set up, so.
Sure. So, what we've done in the past, when we had a venue with a stage, we would literally put the cage on the, right there where your dagel, or your pit would be, if it was a-
Oh, right, from the stage.
Yeah, right up on the stage. And then, we would have, for this venue, we would have the red corner and blue corner up on the stage as their locker room and everything. And then, when, and they had time to come out, walk out, you know, walk downstairs and into the cage. This event will be, it's sanctioned by the Utah Athletic Commission out of Boise, and so, they regulate all of the fighters' blood work, their medicals, make sure the matches are, matchmaking is equal. There's no one fighter who, you know, has ten years of experience versus someone who just started training. So, they review all of those matches as well, so no one's going to the hot food after that. It's required that we hold fighters' like, fighters' insurance, as well as general viability insurance for the spectators. Also, EMT needs to be on standby, that's required by the, as well as the medical doctor will be on standby as well. So, when the fighters come up to their bouts, they're evaluated by the doctors, and if they need to go to the hot food, EMT is right there.
So, you have an EMT that, not, not one of our ambulances or something?
We usually schedule with Pocatello. So, this is the, this here in Pocatello will be our third, either third or Pocatello fight. We've done two at the FMX over there with Sheldon, and everything went really well. We're going to have a, since it's over there.
I have no problem with both of the, I'd just say in that, that you make sure that you have your contract with the sheriff's office so that we have the proper security.
And on that, I did, we did schedule a security company, we'll be able to do both.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and so, the sheriff's office is a fee that we, we have been kind of assessing. So, the sheriff's office will actually bill me, and then I'll pass that bill through. So, that's the way that we've been, we've been doing those. And so, and it's worked pretty well. Really, the sheriff's office dictates, they look at these events and they tell me how many people, and I don't argue with them. So, if they, if they say it's going to be six people, then that's just what-
They're there for porsha, there's any place that, any event for selling alcohol, they're involved.
So, and then I'll, I can, we can work out that side too, but.
Just so we make sure that that's a part of the agreement.
And I, personally, I like the fact that this shows a little bit of diversity for our venue, you know, it's, you know, I think that the more we can diversify what we do, the better we'll be in the future for the whole thing.
We could have this on the elf stage, and we could have the monster trucks in the grandstands.
Oh, yeah, on that. So, in April, we did a fight, what is it, Washington County, St. George, they called us up to be part of their fair that they had in April. They decided, oh, this would be too hot, you know? So, we were actually stationed in the parking lot, and then, and the grandstand was, what was it, the Derby or, yeah, it was the Derby. So, yeah, while the fighters were fighting, just, it was kind of hard to hear the announcer at times.
Yeah. I think that's the original one, yeah.
Yeah, the one that was in the packet, and you just handed it to them.
I just, I said, I don't know where, the one that we handed you is the original, but either one of us worked.
Oh, yeah, and then, and this event would feature a lot of our local fighters here in Pocatello. We have about three martial arts gyms that are participating. in Pocatello, we have about three martial arts gyms that are participating in this, as well as Idaho Falls, we have two from Idaho Falls, and a few from the Boise area as well.
So who's, who's some of them are going to be involved in this?
They were by the Connor McGregor.
I was going to, I was going to ask you what your thoughts were on that.
He just broke it. Um, Bill Gatright, Mandrill, Mandrill Academy here in Pocatello, a new gym, Jabs Two as well, and, what is it, MCT, MCT, something like that, Fighters Training Center.
Okay. Do you have a motion, let's go through the events.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, make the motion that we approve the JP Marketing Events contract as presented.
Promotion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go forth and beat people up.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be chatting.
Thank you.
I know, she didn't invite him up here. I was going to have him and Roger, Roger, a little go about.
And I did have one, like, just an update on there, I think on the agenda, it doesn't say update. It said, it was supposed to say update, but it was just a, an update of the event center, if you'd like one, you can have one, if not, you probably don't want to.
We could have a brief one, because it isn't on the agenda.
Oh, it's not, you know, it's okay, we'll, we'll get it next time, for sure.
Ah, okay.
I think it says plumbing updating, the plumbing and updates, but that's okay.
Update plumbing upgrade request, okay.
Okay, so we're good. We'll talk about it next time. Thank you.
You want them?
Yeah.
And then this one? Do you want us to keep it, and just put it on Tuesday?
Oh, yeah, it's on there.
I'll give it to Aunt Christie, and she'll get it on our agenda for Tuesday.